All right, ladies and gentlemen, I call the county commissioner, Colin Schip. More than just meeting versus the budget for Lake Madison State.
Point my way to the agents to the flag of the United States of America. Intensively, our approach is hands on, in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, folks. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, okay, the first order is the consent agenda. There is a correction. One meeting minutes for last meeting night through July 15, 2025, and June of July 8.
I also have another correction to make. When they did our audit, Ryan told me when we do the bills that we should have the check numbers listed. So I have for payment of bills, I'm going to put right after it. Check number 32930 to 32986, direct deposit 888 to direct deposit 908, EFT 119 to EFT 121, Comcast bill for 40871, and Comcast bill for 29430. That's all right from the check register, but he said to put it.
So that'll be a two-year from now.
Yeah, so if you ever need to go back and look at something, you can be like, oh yeah, that was a check number. It was from this month.
Sounds good. It's on the financial report as well. The check numbers for the month are on the financial report.
Right, right.
So we've got the ballots of going back and checking as we always do.
Okay, all right, we have a correction and a petition, I guess.
So I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections as stated.
We have support?
How's the report?
We have motion and support to accept the consent agenda with the direction. Okay, what about the other?
Anderson asks, Kuzinski yes. Still no yes.
Stevens, yes. The motion carries. Okay, citizens' comment. This is a chance for anyone who would like to address the board. Opportunity, we have another citizens' comment at the end of the agenda. Anybody? Okay, all right, moving on, we have county commissioner Rushing and county commissioner Tomasko. We'd like to talk to you first about the state of internet and the county. That's a big concern.
Well, these day president acts, but you're not going to say, do you guys have any other questions that specifically have to me about accounting? But he's going to be the answer to the starter.
Dave asked me to come in. We had the last couple of years with especially with some of the ARDO money. And then some of the bills that came out of Congress. They, there was money allocated for the IRDA presidential opportunity development fund. And it was a counter-ride. People bid on a company called Mercury Broadband. They're out of Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri. And they bid the Michigan piece with the federal government. Okay, so there was lots and lots of money. And there's build-out requirements. There's things that they need to do. And uploads and download speeds and all these various things. And they basically, they're trying to get rural development. Because right now, you've got Resa, they've got a line that goes from places in the county up to the courthouse, something across the border, the city. They got a chunk of cable that's high-speed. And what it is, is your high-speed cable, optical fiber, is the high-speed. And that's the very best you can get. You can get a line, this line home, full line, site only, you can sample it all in different methods. But the only thing that's really of value is optical fiber.
No, is that? I heard before someone say the hundred up, hundred down.
I don't know, but I didn't brush up on upload, download speeds. But in order to get, see, the reason we don't have, I live in an open township. I'm just a one. I go from the land and rewording all those areas up in the north. We have, I mean, I offer a television in my home because I don't have high-speed internet. You know, because we have, we have frontier, okay? So the reason we don't have high-speed internet, because for coming to produce that, for coming to come out, very often fiber, but in all the materials to do that, they have to have a certain density to make a profit. Otherwise, it isn't really money. So that's where they came up with, under the state of Michigan, Robin Grants, they call it the state of Michigan. It's a whole money set aside for that. That's had money set aside for that. Because the ARDA funding was federal. If you had ARDA funding for an area, you couldn't get the Robin Grants to Michigan to advance it, which are done. Yeah, you know, so there's some politics involved with it. So what is the status of high-speed internet? I imagine you guys have better access to high-speed than I do, say, over the northwest part of the county. But I don't know if Mercury Broadband's up here.
To some.
Yeah.
Two years ago.
Well, like the fellow from St. Clair.
Dave LeDoux?
Dave LeDoux, Duke Broadband, he's got the trunk. He's, he's.
Yeah, he was here last month. And here, they're just wrapping up an IRA, and they're moving across the main city highway coming up.
See, whatever, what people are trying to do is all of a sudden they go frontier. Like I've got frontier forever, and it's just, it's lost. Well, now ATZ, Mercury Broadband, Frontier, the Duke, Resa, you know, there's money to be had. So now they're all kind of trying to get, they're trying to get this work, trying to get these areas. So like Duke Broadband, he's local, been there a long time. So he's, I like, I like that local part, right? So you know, Duke Broadband is expanding what he's got as best he can. Out in our area, the only thing we've really got is Mercury coming in with the federal money. And then what they do too is you bid these areas to work. But then once they work, they decide they can't do it economically or from a business angle. They can draw a petition into the State Department, which has some backup. In other words, they come in and they lock it up, they get that job, and then wow, they, I don't think so. So they give it up, they walk away from it. Somebody else can pick it up. So there's all this kind of shuffle going on. It's piecemeal, but to run fiber to the home, fiber to the building, that is 100% high-speed. It'll be there forever, you know, that's valuable. If you do the, they call the garbage on the stick, they put the cell phone hole, and they're shooting line to site on that. That's not those bad, it's comfortable enough business. It's just very comfortable. No one's going to come and take it over. No one's going to do it. If you have cable, optical fiber, someone will come and buy it because it's got value. And then you need to have a gateway into these, like Resa hooks into, something hooks into, like Southfield and Melvin's in the hand. That's like this, you know, you've got to roll all that stuff. So the status of, I mean, I've got a fire on a long road, you know, I've been firing on the attorney for 40 years. Don't know a lot about broadband, except I was studying about what was happening in my district. I tried to get broadband consultant higher by the county to help monitor the installations. Because what you get when they come in and slings a funeral equipment in, you don't know what kind of speed, the download speed you're going to get. The FCC monitors that. There's milestones and there's requirements. Well, just going to be, I check some boxes and says, yeah, here's your upload download. I want to check, right? I want to verify it. So that's one thing you can look at. There was a company, I forget the name of it now, and Wyband Group, Wyband Group. He was a consultant of some township where I'm at. And he would check the upload, download speeds, help them get the grants, help them do all this stuff. And Lynn Township, which is the biggest township in the whole county, they've got fiber to the home. Okay, so that's what you want. You want the very best is fiber to the home. Then it's a lending system where it's fiber to the hole, and it goes to the hole, and it shoots to the home.
Yeah, Dave LeDoux was saying that he's gotten high-high brand.
Yeah, my high.
Yeah, he's using that, like the southeast corner of Casco. But he was saying that there's areas that, like Comcast, just last week, they were laying high-speed cable.
One, two, three, that, there's no one. You still, they're all.
But he was saying even areas that, let's say Comcast serves with cable, they could apply for a grant to run the fiber on it.
That's fiber they're putting on. Honey good, I think.
Got it.
Is that good or bad?
Fiber, fiber is, you have, fiber is what you want. It's high-speed, it's, they put it in loops, so you've got reciprocity. You can give it this way or this way. It's like a loop, you know, there's, it's got, it's a lot of technical aspects of it. But the thing to do is, I would say, if you really, like Casco Township feels there's a need, you know, I can give you the phone number for the fellow from Wyband Group. They're never going to help you, look at what you've got, look where you're going, and manage some of these companies. And I don't, I don't, I'm not an expert in, I need, okay, my high brands, Robin Grants, IRDA grants, all this other stuff, ARDA money. There's all these pools of money. It's hard to follow how everything gets put in, you know?
So who would that contact? We have the company that put in the fiber just on the road here last week.
What companies have?
I thought they were called like High End Communications. All they do is.
They're self-transportation, or the company that solicited the question?
Well, just, we had some neighbors unhappy with the restoration work they did on their property.
So they ripped it up and left it?
Well, yeah, they, well, they tried to restore it, but not, that's good, yeah, so.
Get a couple of guys with some races, some grass, you call it hair, it's good.
But, so.
I get a few things. Comcast and Riley Township, because that's Riley. They're putting in new telephone poles, working with Edison, because they're asking at this certain height difference between. So they're going to hardwire Riley Township, Comcast is. And from my understanding, this Frontier, come October this year, is eliminating all landlines in Riley Township. And I just got rid of my two landlines all last week because my fax hasn't worked for three weeks through my company. And my company's phone hasn't worked for three weeks. I called them up and I can't get it to work, so. That guy at Frontier, I completely understand, and so anyways, I'd say we keep my phone. I don't know if Frontier's going to be doing that with you guys, if you have anything to interconnect with them or not. But Frontier, you probably look at them and see if they're going to be shutting down where you're at. And also Comcast, if they're coming to you, they most likely are. It's a very competitive business to get the dollars and the money. So Comcast wouldn't be doing this if they weren't going to break even or make money off of it.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, why I don't understand why half of the township has Comcast and the other half does not. Comcast made that years ago, but they didn't.
Well, you guys are, because Comcast is not in the business of providing service on loss. They're in the business, so if you have density in a certain area where they go up with a branch or something, they can get it to you. It's even, I don't know, that is all shashy.
But it sounds like a whole lot of hoops to jump through and walls to cut. And that is the whole, that was the whole position of the federal government, to get service to rural areas. And here we are, four years later, still waiting for it.
Well, these contracts, the ones with ARDA program, they've got 10 years to do it. And it's not like you stamp your fingers and everyone's buried it. So they're, like on my district, they haven't even got me in my place yet. And they're still doing all the different roads they, my daughter's got it, she's a dairy farmer's wife. They got it down Sharon Road, okay, they got it, and they likes it. It's supposed to be coming my way sometime, but they're not crossing Little Creek yet. So, you know, one, two, three, you have to shoot up into Campbell and into Fort Brashet. Look, Duke Broadband is down in St. Clair area, so they're all kind of, going down those kind of tunnels, you know? And they got to build it out. And you can't say, hey, we're going to be working this township till we're done.
About eight months ago, 10 months ago, one, two, three came to Riley Township to the planning commission. And they're going to put a substation in right off of Dover Road. And because they didn't make the zoning, because it's residential. And, you know, you got, we potentially could allow it, but there were so many questions that they wouldn't answer. And like, okay, where are you going to tie in to program? You want to grow this township, but they wouldn't give you any specifics. They're coming down here too, I would say about that. So they were going to come down here, but they kind of abandoned, kept them up, laid the hurt going some. Because the planning commission wanted to decide planning, what they wanted to do. All right, what kind of damage are you going to do? What is that area you're going to do? And they got, I'll get the public act, 240 something. That allows them, it was written a long time ago, that they're allowed to go off the right-of-way from the roads. And they can board under your property without your permission. That's a law in Michigan. So all they need is to get them someplace where they can board the lines, they can order, they can board what they want. They can board their lines, so.
Does that mean I can take my tech and cut the lines in half?
I can't hear you.
I say, does that mean I can dig my back and cut the lines in half? And they can board my property to go compensation?
You might not have.
We did, we did sign a letter for. Duke Broadband, yeah, I think it's Broadband, so it's a state grant. And the county just signed a letter for support to help them get grant.
Well, maybe that would help.
But we would see the county as a, in, we're not in the business of providing, we provide some shared services, hyper网 services. We don't do any of that.
But you know, I came over out, it comes off the circuit.
Prior to the last election, Steve did try to forward it to where we put some of our upper funds to assist the audio road there is. And it didn't give priority to vote to use money to do that specific purpose.
Well, there was some, a big chunk of ARDA money they got, some went. Some townships, like in my district, it was, we had funds that were available, we decided to put it up by a commissioner to the district. I just want per capita, each, each per capita, per township. Do what you want, build a playground, have a splash pad, do internet, whatever you want. That's how I did it. Dave did some.
Well, I did all, and talking to you guys, saw money come in. What I did for all six townships for Kansas City and Memphis is got a million and a half. Million the first time, and half of me the second time, or twice first, I think, was half a million, and then a million. And what I did, I took the exact compilation, and everybody got the exact share. That way, through your money, over your general fund, and you got to use the money for whatever you want.
Yeah, half of it's already leaned on St. Clair Highway.
But see, we're not in the business of slinging internet cable. We don't do that, and it will, that's got to be done by private industry. Now, we can help them, we can help facilitate grants.
That's what I'm asking. That's all, that's all that you can do.
We've done, we've done everything we can do. What I want with broadband is also the county is to have somebody available to come in and then check and see what you're getting.
We, but it seems to me we did that like four years ago. We had someone come in and check the services that we had. That's when we found out that Comcast had said that our entire township was covered. And it was not.
Well, I think they have a contract with you that you signed 20, 30 years ago. That happened in Riley Township.
Yeah, we are franchisees.
Yeah, it's kind of like First Riker Refuge.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, we've been unhappy about that, a couple of instances signing 30-year contracts with someone.
We have a guy approach us about two, over two years ago. Remember that Raymond Stein?
Yes.
He was going to map out the township. I talked to Dave LeDoux, and he said, nah, he goes, there's other mapping coming out, you won't have to pay for it. And he was right, you know, it was provided, so.
Well, I know you guys got a lot of business. Do you have any specific questions that potentially can be answered or assisted here? Or anything that I can suggest you to come?
No, that is mainly just to know, you're obviously aware of this problem. And you're obviously aware of everybody's frustration.
It's a huge problem, everything, oh, the port here in St. Clair, Fort Brashet. Everything, all down here, it just gets worse and worse, and you get all the damage coming. And there's some high-speed coming in out of 69, there's a company that's got a big trunk coming in that way. As long goes to Southfield, you got to tie in these things, it just has to get built up. And all it can do is facilitate it. And, you know, the base of the ARDA money and the GRAD money and the RAC, the wrestling plan that happened for the Joe, the, just cracking all the rail, the treasury. Those days are gone.
Yeah, well, last week, they were coming up, Lindsey went down Lindsey, and then from here, they went north on Melville.
Yeah.
I think that's, was it Comcast?
Well, Riley, like I said, they're putting it on poles. Which can be hardwired, and that probably be hardwired for, well, fairly easily on the telephone pole, because you can get every house.
And also, they too, they went down to Mize and wrote down Melville.
You can run optical fiber poles, you can run it and bury it. It's all the same.
Yeah, they did it both. They had it on poles, and then they buried it down there, so, Lindsey. Yeah, so. Anyone else on the board have questions? Some good county commissioners here.
You know, another thing that I had to discuss with you, and I know that Molly Cora has and the county has. I would really appreciate it if you could get your L4029s to the treasurers before that.
Yeah, I already addressed that in Melville to the administrator. We had a couple of townships had the same problem. It was some anomaly, some reason, something happened. You had like two or three days to get your paperwork in.
Right.
Yeah, and there were some complaints came in, and I asked, I got over the treasurer's office, and it was a glitch is what it was, but they're.
Okay, it's not a disaster, you know, it's a matter of having, you're being early in May.
Something to do with some time, some agency, it just, everybody squeezed and then.
Yeah, early in the year, but, you know, we don't get those numbers to me, I'm not putting them on the tax code.
Well, when they do, it actually taxes all the way down, it's just November, it'll all be gone, right?
Is the county commissioners working on anything that us down Casco should be concerned with?
You like secret things?
Yes, secret things.
Well, as you watch. Health department are working on potentially policy, we've got to have a planning minister, because currently they're not. So we're working with the health department on some issues. But Dr. Nevin, he's our medical officer, and he's brought up the issue about fluoride.
Oh.
And the poison, if there's, you know, very documented, he's very, he's a smart guy. So anyways, that's been addressed, and we're probably at October or mid, so we're going to make a decision one way or the other. Either we vote, or we're going to have the health department, the medical director, put out exactly what's going to happen in St. Clair County.
Well, we're not doing any of the solar legislation, solar regulations and litigation. So that is a public health ordinance based on the public health law affecting solar. So then you can now, similarly, then you could have a public health regulation based on public health code for fluoride. Okay, that's a national thing that's going on, so, you know, with Kennedy and all that. And so our medical director is, he's a John Hoffman graduate, certified public health specialist, specialist of doctor certification. He's in public health prevention and a bunch of other stuff. So he's getting out there ahead of it, you know, unless, there's an issue of all that.
State of Florida and the state of Utah are already, the entire state's going to have a lot of fluoride in the public water.
They do not have.
They took out, because when you think, well, I think it's good for your teeth, and I'm going to side with Dr. Nevin's position, the way he explained it. You're putting water, and you're drinking it from the tap water, and it's not good for your teeth, but it is getting into your bloodstream.
You don't swish it around, you drink it. You know, you drink it, and then you're drinking all that neurotoxin in there, at home.
And you can get fluoride into your face.
Well, we don't have that problem out there in the country, do we?
No, we don't. This country does not fluoridate anything. We do not fluoridate anything on a ton of oil. City boy here on Bearsville, Fort Brashet.
We said, we finished that, an individual city decision then?
Possibly. We'll be making that decision if we need to make it. I would probably, Mr. County Commissioner, my vote would go, I do not want poison being put into the residents of St. Clair Comcast. That is a very short version. You can get fluoride and.
You can really live on our lives.
But to me, though, if it's a city thing, then be up to the people of that city to decide.
That's what I need for is doing opt-out. So if you want to have a common regulation, if the people in the city areas don't want to have fluoride, what happens?
No, they can't, if they want it, they can keep it. I'd just like to see the study of country kids and what their dental records look like.
Well, the one dental showed up, and I had three kids, and my oldest is 50 now, and the youngest is 45. Between the three of them that had three cavities, the 50-year-old had zero.
Yeah.
And the guy says, you gotta have fluoride in the water. The dentist showed up there, he's, put all these numbers out there, but anyone just fabricated it. He said, if you don't have fluoride for five years, you're going to have 95 million more cavities. Wait, and then I brought out that.
I know, I know. I know a lot of people who just.
Don't put sugar in your mouth. I said, my kids don't drink pot.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I probably directed Dr. Landville, it was a big issue, and some of these to Landville. There's some regulatory issues, there's some, we've got a peer review company that's going to talk about some thing. We're going to take a solid look at that before we go to Landville. And then the EDA was a big one for the first nine days of Delta. What was going on with county development in the county, and we're still in the process of discovering what level of participation counties have in economic development. And we created a committee called the community in economic development, because you communicate with its home, home crews, small, small business, job retention. Or is it going to be, let's go grab the Goshen solar plant, the battery plant, let's go out and get all the distinct people a lot? That was kind of the disconnect between EDA, because it wasn't really community development. It was just aggressive economic development. Your slaughterhouse next to the church, yeah, we'll take it, you know, data center next to the penitent, we'll take it, you know?
Yeah, no, we're trying to go in after these companies that were basically picking and choosing which community they were going in.
And if you weren't, Jeff going for the short version, you didn't know, he couldn't tell you what was going on. He brought up a billion and a half dollar company, you might have been in those meetings, one of 26 Mall, but I can't tell you who it is. It's Jeff knew, but the rest of us commissioners.
They signed, they signed confident general agreements, it's the legal officials, which is bad, right?
So, I would support that, because I represent you. And I'm not going to go, if you ask me a question, I'm going to be the answer. So.
Yeah, they're probably not being right, maybe.
Well, I'll probably get part of the feedback from him. On the late vote, and I imagine I'd probably push for this, within the next six months, you know, we'll get Canadian trash. Because that's going to cost you more money.
That was a million dollars, a $200,000 drop in right there for the sculpture. We rolled up a million bucks.
Yeah, but look at how the roads are. We have to keep continuously.
I understand that, that would be the upside, is it's a revenue cap, that's what they're saying.
Each household generates about a ton and a half of garbage, trash. And it's worth close going, so they have to go there. The, whatever they're crossing, that Landville, we're going to get out of a camp longer, a camp less, very close soon now. And I don't know if you get contracts, a special assessment, Riley gets a special assessment, about $170,000. Probably do it per household, they can get through whatever they want now. Well, Friday, we went to Jeff Rubbish, and he was cheaper than, what's the big one?
Waste management.
Waste management. And waste management went and put it in their contract about fuel costs. They says, well, we may have to raise during the year, so we didn't cite it then. That's back on our supervisor Friday, and Jeff's done a fantastic job. But the tipping piece potentially will go up $12 a ton, which means that 20-year residents is going to pay that portion. Most of you, I don't know, what you guys are paying now, I mean, probably around $20 a month.
Whoa.
Overwhelming, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's correct, that's correct.
But they're good, and they're reliable.
So I might vote for 25, I'm just.
I'm not here. We don't have to see them, but we'll still see them, because they're still going to go to the one and around.
Pine tree.
Yeah. Because that's, that's McColltown, so.
Yeah.
So the Canadian trust will still go there, right?
Well, that's why I say, like, I mean, you know, we have our land, but the state just changed the material management laws. We're now, you know, we used to recycle, we were not that, other than the boards since 2007. And we paid people, we had these cans of drugs, people came in, little blue-haired ladies, and the police cars were putting all the cans and bottles in. If I know, this is very, when times are tough and online, if I know, there was no market for us. What were they doing? They were handing them out, taking them all, taking the land.
Yes.
So people are scanning it.
Yes.
So we have a $200,000 contract, well, let's quit doing that, and just go in the garbage scanner. And that's not stupid at all. Now, with the state, they're so driven by the Great New Deal and all that, hey, now it's material management, let us say at the Landville. So we're going to do site separation, we're going to do material handling at the Landville. We've got to have a plan for that. And it's no longer, before it used to be, you had to be a reciprocal plant, to be taking trash across county lines. But now, it's going to be more of a free marketing. So to me, we're very lucky, we have our Landville. That Landville can last a very long time, because we've done properly. The issue with second injection and the accelerated decomposition to create Landville gas. We're now looking at getting in with Detroit Edison, who was called a RNG plant, renewable natural gas, highly compliant bio methane. But that becomes, you're not no longer burning it in 10, 20-cylinder cat engines, which over Pine Tree, where someone was a, basically had a can, they had 20. 20, 20-cylinder cat engines running 24 hours on Landville gas. Well, when you burn, you send Landville gas, every unit of Landville gas goes right to the pipe. Some of it isn't burned up, okay, it comes out in the air, right? Renewable natural gas, none of it. You purify it, it turns into natural gas, pollen gas. And guess where 95 runs? Right against Hills Creek Road, where it comes from. You pipe it in there, so hopeful, and that's actually a revenue boost as well. So someone wants, everyone can look. And because of this with the Landville, we had a last action lawsuit that was just a distraction. We had Eagle involved, because there were people agitating the community, trying to get them to go get Eagle after, you know? So now we got a consent order in place, and, you know, all this stuff. We finally cleared that, that's on that, and maybe now we can do some things with the Landville. So those who think on a county level, like Dave said, well, the good thing is, we don't have to worry about it. We can, we decide our duty or need, and we'll just make it the best Landville we can. Part of the problem since 2010, when they started this renewable, this renewable, little lot of renewables, which is the gas engine plant, kind of like Edison. When we started that, well, at the time, we had a really good deal on what we paid for that. But this is all going to change now. So we can, you know, we can get into this other system. Detroit has to take over the gas collection, it'll take over the compliance part of it. There's a lot of options for us to look at, some changes going forward. There's a lot of options for us to look at, some, some changes going forward, and then, uh, it's to the benefit of the county, what can we help? Because it's good for, if you, once you accelerate the decomposition, like certain, uh, substance into that, it's seven times faster, seven times the gas, seven times faster, it becomes, it becomes inert that much quicker, so you don't have all the legacy costs. But we hired a consultant to walk us through some different things, we got all this litigation and all sorts, it's really a, kind of a, pretty busy last year or so.
Jeff, you don't understand, I mean, it probably do, sort of, they're only the pie, they're not the ground, but it's in eight cells. And what we do, we put trash in one of the cells each year, keep moving. What happens is, the bioreactor that we're going in, putting the substance in there, it accelerates the methane and the breakdown. So our landfill goes back coming to the ground. Our landfill has airspace, and once you use up your airspace, you have to push your landfill, but our landfill, it probably got fifty to seventy years left in it.
It's like a pile of leaves, you're gonna be composing, and it falls like this and springs like that, and crashes down.
So that's how our landfill works, and that's how we generate gas for the, for Edison, twenty-year contract with them, and I think a ten hundred thousand dollars a year, we go to contract.
Well, you, assuming you're counting a fine conventional wisdom, because I heard our old planner said that Canadian garbage is the heroin of communities in Michigan. Once you get on it, you can't get off it.
Well, it's fine, because I, I speak up in Lake Simcoe, it's up in Berrin, Ontario, guess where these trash trucks are coming? Six hours away, Berrin, Ontario, they don't take them to Toronto, all the Toronto trash, all these trash trucks, they're coming all these times, because Ontario was a lot, they don't deal with it. So we take it, and that, that was fuel for the bioreactor, that was, that was all the fault. But in December twenty-three, I guess it was, is when we find, so now we're gonna do this, all this right now, where we got gas coming out of here, speaking to the community, we don't need any more acceleration here, so now it's kind of everything a positive, we're gonna get, get the center behind this, get the, um, this, this lawsuit is a joke, you got to dismiss it by the court. You know, the lawyer quit, it was just a, just a stupid thing, you know, a distraction of the county.
Okay, all right, any other questions that you have to give?
No.
Okay.
Not an information.
Yeah. If you're a mom and a dad.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I agree.
Okay.
What I'm asking for, I'm talking about.
I gotta be prepared for that.
Yes, you can, for sure. Very nice.
We're here again.
Very interesting.
Okay, um, next thinking is, uh, is King Investing Audit Services LLC audit financial report. Did everybody have that to look this over?
Yes.
We usually, in past years, have had a representative from the firm come, um, they said that is an added cost, and a lot of times communities, they don't ask them any questions, they do the presentation out the door. So, um, they said it's an option if we want in the future, but it would cost, it would be a cost associated with this. We elected this year just to, um, forego that, and just, um.
Look it over, or something?
Look it over. It went pretty smooth, I thought. Um, they had, I know, I was, I know Ryan, um, had questions about the park, and I had directed him about paying a lot, and she took care of, about the grants and that, so that.
Now, all you have to do is show them what comes in and what goes out.
Yeah.
And we've got that, um, recorded in the Parks and Rec account. It's, and they pull all of the bank records before they even set foot in this door, so they know the money issue before they even sit down. They're just coming through to, um, look at how we compile our information, and if it squares with the bank, then that's, that's what it is.
So, no, we're, they did put a note of caution, they said with inflation, that just be careful in twenty years, so.
You need to watch it carefully.
So, yeah. Okay, any other questions, comments, or that? Okay, we need a.
So do we need to accept it, or approve it, what's the?
I think accept it.
Accept it?
Yeah. So we need a motion to accept the financial, the audit.
So.
Support.
We have motion and support to accept the own financial report from King Investing Audit Services LLC. Okay, uh.
Anderson, yes.
Anderson.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stoker, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Looks like I can all find this in pretty cheap.
Yeah.
As it was last year.
Yeah.
Um, you can see on the.
Okay.
Your investment report, what we got.
Okay. I don't, I mean, I haven't seen, two thousand twenty-five request for local millage distribution, St. Clair County Parks and Recreation. This is here, we have to submit this one every year to the county, to Parks and Recreation, from there, they use this to, um, send our amount of millage funds. So last year, we got twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from the county. That's from the Parks and Rec millage, that's been approved every year. Uh, we use those funds to maintain the grounds and facilities at Casco Township, Bell River Park, and Fredmore Highway, that's what we use those funds for.
Did you get these numbers from the CPA, from the?
Yeah, this is the form that, um.
Wasn't it typed?
What's that?
Their number.
We had last year, but this year I was given this one.
Oh, okay, I'm not reading it. Okay. So do we need to approve, accept?
Yeah, we need to accept, approve this.
Approve it?
Yeah.
No. I'm fixed it, I have Joe fixed it. Maybe one more there?
No.
On the top?
Oh, got it. Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
So.
Support.
We have motion support to accept the, um, this, um, the two thousand twenty-five request for local millage distribution, St. Clair County.
Approve or accept, sorry?
Approve.
Okay.
Yeah, approve. So, okay, roll call.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Both of you.
Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay, next one is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, St. Clair County Road Commission two thousand twen- twenty-six, local, it's two thousand twenty-six, excuse me, local road funding assistance program. This past year, we use, every year the county, we do a match drive, where there's certain approved projects that we can do. It's a fifty-fifty, um, split on this. For the last, we, um, Commissioner Schmasco talked about ARPO money, and that last year, we used ours to, um, blacktop a half, a mile of St. Clair Highway. If you go down there, it's nice, and between Church Road and Beefe Road. Uh, so they're using ARPO money plus with the match drive, so this isn't costing, costing Casco Township enough. We're now going for this resolution to do that last mile from Beefe Road to County Line, to do the blacktopping of, uh, for perhaps.
So, do we need to, like, in the wording of the resolution, we just have the total cost of the project, do we need to split that out in the wording of the resolution?
Where it, well, it says a fifty-fifty match in that, chain from St. Clair ARPO and St. Clair County Road Commission, with a total project cost.
Do we need to spell out, like, do we need to write in there that it's eighty-one thousand nine hundred and two from the?
I know, we did that shirt, exactly, I guess.
Okay, that's fine.
Yours was a question.
That's fine.
What's nice about this, this ARPO funds are actually county ARPO funds, it doesn't need to us, they took care of everything.
Good.
So, okay, so we need to accept Casco Township, St. Clair County Resolution.
Adapt, adapt. Adapt.
Adapt.
I so need to adapt this.
Okay, we have support for it.
I have support.
Okay, a motion support to adopt, um, Casco Change of St. Clair County Resolution, two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, uh, roll call, okay.
Does that need to be rolled out?
I don't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next one is St. Clair County, um, work order. It's a four and a half foot diameter cul- crossroad culvert replacement in Petticup. This is on Petticup Road, this is like a medium-sized culvert, it was, it's between Beefe and County Line, closer to Beefe Road. Last year, they discovered it when their local culvert, that was in very bad shape, at the point where it's thought to fail. So, um, the cost of the culvert replacement, now Dan, being new on the job, and he even met some of his jobs, he quotes are higher than probably it's gonna be, but he's just not used to quoting jobs, if Mike was here, it was probably lower. So the cost of the culvert replacement is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven. Now, we have, um, ten thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-one dollars in our grain fund. I would like to use that, and the township would pay seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Now, Dan was saying that probably not gonna be near that, but he's just being cautious and overestimating these jobs.
How big is it?
What's that?
How big is it?
It's four and a half feet diameter.
Oh, how long? I thought four feet away.
Yeah. Fifty-six feet long.
Fifty-six.
That's pretty big. We do have sixty-four thousand dollars aside in our, so, there is money there.
Yeah.
Just got, you know.
Yeah, I just.
Hopefully less.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I believe it. One time it was, one time they were digging a culvert similar to this, and they hit no bridge abutment, they didn't anticipate that, the county cost them that, I remember that, so, okay.
I make a motion to approve the work order for replacing the failing crossroad culvert on Petticup Road. Do I get to read the whole thing?
Um, no, that's fine, but say then we'll use our portion of the grain fund.
We're gonna use our ten thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars of the grain, the county grain fund.
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to replace the, the failing cul- on crossroad culvert.
Is this a metal drain?
A metal drain.
Yeah, yeah, it's right, right here.
It's a big drain.
Yeah. And, um, so the cost of the culvert placement is twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and we're gonna use our share of the, um, grain fund, of ten thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-one, for a max, for a cost of seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stoker, yes.
Okay, Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay, mold remediation base in basement. We've had an area where the, um, where the sump pump is, and a little maintenance room there, and behind the stairs, we have a mold issue. I had two, two contractors come out and take a look, Environment Act Services, Mold Remediation, and Pure Air Michigan Mold Remediation.
Yes, I had three of those.
What's that? Yeah, three.
They didn't wanna.
Yeah, no.
He didn't want it.
Right, he, he said it was too small.
Yeah, he didn't want it.
Environment Act Services, um, they have done a job for us before, they had removed the tile in the basement, they had a specimen in it, and they also did some mold remediation for us before. Uh, Mr. Shep, the owner, was very knowledgeable of his work, and he says for what, what he quoted here, would clean up that, and, um, they would keep it down, or we wouldn't have to move, we could do it out of pocket, not make an insurance claim on it, they would raise our rates. Pure Air Michigan Mold Remediation, theirs is quite a bit north, well, also, Mr. Shep recommended that we did a commercial-grade dehumidifier for the basement.
Did he look at, at the, uh, rooms on the other side to make sure that the mold came through?
Yeah, we, it was right around the sump pump area, and right behind the clawway.
Did, did, um, Townsite do that last time, did they do that there the last time, do you remember?
They did a portion of it, but they did in the, um, room where we keep the tables and chairs.
But they didn't do what where the sump pump is?
No.
Cause there was nothing there?
Right.
So I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So on the Environment Act quote, um, it says that they're going to remove all the old and captive drywall, it's on the front page of their quote, like the third, um, bullet point down there. If we, if any of the, like, if the drywall needs to get removed, or the ceiling tile, or whatever, who, how are we going to, we have to pay to have it be done?
Right.
Right, so we have to keep that in mind too, and that would be for either one of them.
Yeah.
Um, also, it said, um, they're going to treat, it's like the second one from the bottom bullet point, it says they're gonna treat the entire basement with an anti-methrovia. Does the whole basement need to be empty for them to do that?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's something we need to find out, because then that's another added cost, because those backs are, we're gonna have to have removing people to undo it, because it looks too heavy.
And there's some insurance probably too, do you think?
Well, if, like, all of this stuff is gonna get up, it might make more sense to make an insurance claim than. I mean, I don't, I, I know we need to do it, but we have to think of all of these extra costs, and if it's gonna be five or ten thousand dollars, it might, it'd make more sense to make a claim, I don't know.
I, yeah, I, I just don't know if it's appropriate for this sort of thing, but I have to look into that, but, yeah, I would, I would put in an insurance claim.
And then, another question I had is with this humidifier, is that something that it's easy to hook up, like, like you could do it, or is that something we have to hire?
No, you can, it's easy to.
It's. Um, and again, on the, on the second page, the first paragraph, it said all storage things must be removed in the storage area, so we're gonna have to have someone come and all that stuff on there, that, I mean, there's not that much stuff, because I'm not gonna have to do it.
Right.
Down there, so we have to keep that in mind.
True.
Um, also, down here, in the middle, um, it says that the building must be unoccupied during remediation for occupant safety. And I wanna say over here, it said three days, so that means that they would do Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yeah.
You sure?
Well, that's what we'll call it.
Okay. Cause otherwise it'll disrupt, it'll disrupt us. That's all I had on that one. On that second one with the Pure Air Michigan, they didn't say anything about having to remove anything, and, and their second section here, for thirty-six hundred dollars, a dry fog mold disinfection, it basically says they're gonna do it everywhere, so, again, do we need to move everything out of there, or is that something that they can do since it's going in the air? I, I don't know, that's something we need to find out.
Well, for either or, either or of these are accepted, we still can't see anything.
Right, but again, we need to make sure, you know, if we do need to have any others come in or something, that we get all these costs together and be like, okay, well, it's more like five thousand, more like ten thousand, so, you know, check and go there and see. I think that's all I had.
Any other questions, do you have any?
Two, three, I guess.
Okay.
So are we expecting one or the other, or?
Yeah.
That's the plan.
I make, myself, I'm not making a poll, I reckon, I think we should go with the part of Max.
Well, we can, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm with the, I'm with our last to do this job for a fee of three thousand four hundred and fifty bucks, that's approved, so we deliver to them.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion support to, um, to hire Environment Act Services for a, a fee of three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, includes the nine fifty for the dehumidifier.
Yeah, yeah. So, any other questions?
You're gonna check about the added cost.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stoker, yes.
Okay, Stevens, yes, motion carries, okay. All right. Okay, Phil, it's sign and light, we have a, we, last meeting, we had a, a discussion on the sign, I called up a very next day.
Is that the one out here that don't work yet?
It does work now.
Oh, yeah?
Kind of.
So, we, uh, I called off. So, we, uh, I called up. They weren't, I called them up Wednesday. They said they'd be here Monday. They come out, a young man came out, spent about three hours working on the sign. It wasn't quite right. He came out the next day, was working, he got it working. I called up Philip Sign and I was impressed with that. Cause we bought the sign off with Sign Fabricators. But Sign Fabricators don't service their signs. They have Works Direct. They're way over in White Lake. And to get them to come out here, you have to call and call and call. So, I asked Philip, would you be willing to take order maintenance of the sign? They agreed to do so. They could get every part except the panels. It's called the LED panels and the connecting cables. They researched, they couldn't find a supplier of that because they're made everywhere. So, I consulted with our attorney, with Chris Anderson. I said, I'd like to get, I, um, the part, the label supplier. So we contacted, um, Sign Fabricators and they referred me to Works Direct. And Chris contacted them. So, once we get that, name that supplier for us and we give it to Philip, and Philip knows where they can get the parts, I will, I'm gonna come before the board here to take, um, Sign Fabricators, a small claims court, to recoup our costs that we're gonna be doing tonight.
So, do me a favor and keep track, paper trail, so that we have all this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna do a paper trail on it, so.
Paper call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Philip's has been fantastic and Chris Anderson's been pounding away at the odor of Sign Fabricators.
Oh, I bet she sees me and she sees me. That lady, yes, Lisa over there doesn't wanna.
Yeah, they legitly, they're selling the sign, but yet they don't want not to do it in service. So we would've known about that early. But, it is what it is.
Sometimes you do what you pay for.
Yeah, but Philip's, when we have positive, Philip's is ready to do it and we call him, we know he's here.
Well, I make a motion that we pay this invoice to Philip Sign. It's invoice five four seven two three and the amount of eight hundred and twenty-two, twenty-five. And we, I won't say in the hopes of getting reimbursed, but we know we're gonna take the other place to small claims court.
Okay, okay, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion support to, um, Philip Sign and Light, invoice number five four seven two three for eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay, revised contract for Star Power Clean. We looked at, we looked at, the old hall in the basement is not being as used as much. And we were having them clean the old hall all the time in the basement. I think it was upon request, yeah. So we looked into it and I asked about Jordan, who owns it. So we're paying a hundred and thirty dollars to clean the offices in the old hall. A hundred and ninety dollars when we request the basement and ninety dollars a week to clean this. So we asked them to do a revised contract. We're gonna do it for a hundred and fifty dollars a week just to clean, well, to clean the offices, the hall, in the hall here. And we have it in there upon request to clean the old hall in the basement.
The only thing I don't like about this is it doesn't say how much. When we, when it says the basement and old hall will be cleaned as needed basis, it doesn't say how much.
Okay.
I think we need to have that in there.
So.
So I don't know if they wanna accept it with, with, I don't know how we wanna word it. Cause I, I think we need to do it because right now they're charging, we're paying them to do that and we don't need them to.
Yeah, how about if we accept that, I could ask Jordan, hey, we accepting your revised contract with the provision you sent us on how much it would cost to do if we ask?
Then if we don't like what the price is, we can bring it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so you're making a motion to add that?
I can hear that. Here's the question.
Okay, we have a motion support to accept the revised service contract with the provision that I'll contact, um, Jordan to see on how much he will pay, I mean, how much he'll charge us when we ask him to clean the old hall in the basement.
And you know what? If you ask them separately, because we might not need them both cleaning at the same time, like how much, how much will you charge us to clean the old hall? How much will you charge us to?
Okay, copy that.
That's good of you.
Okay, you're okay. We're ready to motion and support?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay. Seber Goloski, P L L C, invoice one three six zero seven. We have a lot, you know, from basically a couple of different individuals here. Um, some of that's laying down now.
That's not missing.
Yeah, so, um, the total cost of this invoice is one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents.
I make a motion to approve the bill for Seber Goloski, uh, invoice one three six zero seven and the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents.
Support.
Okay.
Who did that? That was like, Dan?
Dan, support.
Okay. All right, before we say this, I have to admit, um, I know we have, but Chris Anderson is very good. I mean, she gets back quickly. She gives, I think, great legal advice and she's.
She has been, I've talked to her a couple of times, too, like with FOIA's and stuff.
Yeah, she represents the township well, so. Okay, motion support for, um, the Seber Goloski invoice one three six zero seven for one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay, Jay, two thousand twenty-five eighteen professional development retreats. They had retreats for clerks, for the treasurer, supervisor, trustees retreat up there in Brandon, um, various states. I went to the trustees retreat about four years ago. And I know you've gone to a clerk, have you gone there? I think these are wonderful retreats. I would like to go, even though October one falls during our webinar, I have jam chair meeting technically.
They're quick, huh?
Yeah, I think I need to get some of the training and some of the exposure too.
Are they working on budget stuff there? Oh, I guess they are, or check.
Sure.
Sorry, John.
And, um, okay, so, is anyone else interested?
I am interested, of course.
And Gina, do you be interested in going to that?
Sure.
Okay, the trustees retreat?
Sure.
Trustee. Well, these kind of, they have to have.
There.
I think they have all the information I need right from the book.
There you go.
You sure you don't like it?
I, I would love to go and spend two days chatting with people at, um, at three hundred and sixty-seven dollars per.
See, that's what I was thinking too, that's.
See, I, I have.
Maybe information I need for the treasurer's job, I can get right from the Michigan Township.
See, and I, I disagree with the clerk because with the election stuff, it's ever changing and.
Yes, oh, and that, so, but every time I'm on, I listen, all I listen to is treasurers get up and tell me how bad things are in their township. I really don't need to pay three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Plus, plus money.
Plus, whatever. Um, but you go and have a good time.
No. No, all I ask is the registration fee out, I'll pay my own lodging. So, but, um, yeah, but I think these are, these are, um, good retreats. And Dan, what about you?
I'm not gonna do that this year, but I'd be supportive whether I want to do this. In education, that's the exposure of the township, that's what.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, so we need a motion to approve that whether we want to go to this.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to, to parade about elected officials to go to two point five professional development retreats. Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Oh, Kuzinski, yes.
Okay.
Stover, yes.
Okay, Stevens, yes, motion carries. Schumacher Technology Group, invoice number three three one seven. Um, this is their annual, um, their fee there for maintenance. It's six hundred dollars.
So I have a question, not necessarily relating to this invoice, but do you know if they can post stuff on the website for us? Or if they can't, are they able to like do a quick training because of Katie Long? I don't wanna bother her.
Yeah, well, Katie actually, she contacted me this morning and she asked for the agenda. She said she'd be willing to post, but it'd be a good idea to have.
I think, but I think as far as like paying her stuff, it's gonna be hard to keep track of that. If we ask her to do, you know, something minimal here and there, it's gonna be hard to keep track of that. And I mean, even, it doesn't take that long to do. I would volunteer to.
I, I'll.
Get training or agility or whatever.
Cause we gotta talk to them about modifying, looking into getting it to be compliant with the website.
Yes.
So.
Remember, that's not until twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
Yeah, so it's gonna be with two people.
Yeah, we share an opinion on this.
Yep. With that said, I make a motion to approve this invoice for STG and the invoice number thirty-three one seven and the amount of six hundred dollars for our annual website hosting backup security and support. See support?
Okay, we have support.
So that would be like, that would be like support to help us do the website.
We have support. Okay, we have motion support to, um, the Schumacher Technology Group invoice three three one seven for six hundred dollars. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay, this is the proposal, um, for new, would you like to brief that?
Yes, so I have, um, turned in a request to, um, possibly get a grant for ADA, it has to be ADA voting related. And it's ten thousand dollars. So, just for whatever, I decided to call up this company and see if they could give us a quote to do the handicap ramp out there, the wooden one, cause it needs, it needs help. And I didn't know what to expect, but I didn't, it's for tracks and tracks is expensive. So obviously this quote is way, way higher than the ten thousand dollars. So I know that's not something we can do. However, we're still possibly gonna get ten thousand dollars. So I was gonna ask you guys what you thought about maybe getting a couple of quotes to have someone come out, replace any boards that need replacing, any footings or like that, and not to paint it, but to like stain it, cause I think the problem was the paint. It, the stain seems to last longer, or at least it looks like it lasts longer. Whereas the paint is just really bad.
The ramp there is almost thirty years old, just put.
Right. And I know there's worse.
By this point, it's way longer than mine, just unbelievably. I think you might have shot that.
And I did call like three different places and this was the only one that called me back. So I don't know if it's because it's like a, it's probably a, you know, a job.
Well, it is.
It's a long quarter.
It's, yeah.
And maybe it's a busy time.
Yeah, I think we shouldn't. I think that's a good idea. We just, um, I think the structure of it's still solid, but it needs just a little.
Can you do me a favor and can you try to find some people to do that? Just cause I have the election hanging, I don't really have time. And I wanna say if we do get approved of this grant, there is a timeline. Like it has to be done within three months or one week.
Really?
Yeah. So if you could do that, definitely wonderful.
Yeah.
So we're basically not doing any action. I just wanted to, okay, tell you about it.
Okay, all right. Casalab Planning, invoice zero, number zero one five. Um, this has to do with the ZDA hearing, um, last month. So we have a.
Which we get reimbursed for that one, right? The ZDA, they pay for that. Whoever the ZDA hearing was, they would pay for that, right?
For her attendance?
Yeah.
Is that common?
She was here for the township. She was here at the request of the township.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so she doesn't normally come to those?
No, she doesn't.
Okay, so that's honest.
Just a planning mission of.
But the, the sixty dollar perch point, who will get reimbursed for?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, his vice president, came to the office yesterday.
I saw him.
And I gave out the invoice. I went to the mail office and got it out.
Oh, thank you. So, yeah.
So that should be forthcoming.
That's the only thing we're getting reimbursed for. And then whatever the pre-application was, they pay for that.
They pay that and get the day kind of the meeting. I've already collected.
So technically, all of that we're paying for, I mean, we're gonna pay for all of it, but we've only reimbursed for two of them.
Yes.
The bottom two.
Okay, all right.
So I make a motion to pay the invoice to, how do you say her name? Is it Casalab?
Yes.
The invoice number fifteen and the amount of nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support, um, to pay the invoice of Casalab, nine hundred and sixty dollars. I have one thing to say, Karen, I think she does a good job. Whenever I, I had a caller, I stopped they should, like, um, looking up information for me.
Good.
So, okay, do we have, um.
It's roll call.
Yeah, we have support.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes, motion carries. Okay, King and Messing Audit Services LLC invoice one five one zero nine. This was for the cost of the, um, the audit. It's the cost of nine thousand sixty-four dollars and ninety cents.
So, just so you guys know, the sixty-eight hundred dollars comes out of the general fund. The eight hundred for the park comes out of the park fund. The four hundred dollars for the liquor comes out of the liquor fund. And then those three reports, the, well, I don't know about three of them. That first one, the F sixty-five, I'm gonna look into that and see if that's something that we can do, that we don't have to pay the seven hundred and twenty-five. I don't know if that is something that we can do.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if, if that's possible.
Right, I know, but I'm looking.
Testing certified by ninety-seven hundred states.
And that might be it.
When you're gonna do the arts one there?
Yes.
Well, the park, the one that's the park, although, will get taken in, the St. Crepe County Park report, the hundred dollars. And that's, I think, something we can do ourselves too. Cause I looked at that today and they just taught me these numbers. I can't do them there. In fact, I think what I'll do is I'll look at our audit and see if I can do this without looking at that and see if I, if I can do it. And if I can do it, I'll do it next year, so I can undo it. And then with the other two reports, the F sixty-five and the Michigan qualifying statement, I'm gonna divide that into thirds and, and charge the part, part of it and the liquor fund part of it, just so that it's not all coming out of the general fund since it's all of us anyway.
Okay.
Good?
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay, do we have a motion for this?
Make a motion to pay Kirk and Messing nine thousand sixty-four dollars and ninety cents for an annual audit.
Okay, we have support for, um, invoice one five, um, one zero nine from, uh, King and Messing Audit Services LLC for nine thousand sixty-four dollars and ninety cents. Roll call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Yes.
Kuzinski, yes.
Stover, yes.
Stevens, yes, motion carries. Bunch of the numbers.
Okay, the bunch of the numbers, you're gonna need that, that name, that financial report that was in the beginning of the packet to follow along. So, I numbered, I numbered them this time so you can follow along the numbers. So, the first one on the spreadsheet, that's number, number one. We are going to take, um, two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars out of account number one oh one two six five nine sixty, which is Holland Grounds Maintenance Repair. And I'm gonna move it over to account number one oh one two six five seven five two, which is Holland Grounds Supplies. And then that will leave us with an amended budget amount for the first one, one oh one two six five seven five two. The amended budget amount will be three thousand eight hundred and fifty. And the second account, one oh one two six five nine sixty, it'll be the amended budget amount of twelve thousand one hundred and fifty. And the second account, one oh one two six five nine sixty, it'll be the amended budget amount of twelve thousand one hundred and fifty. And the second set of, um, journal entries, number two, goes along, part of it is on page two of the revenue expenditure report where it says number two. So I am taking, uh, four hundred dollars out of account number one oh one three seventy-one dash eight five zero, which is the building department telephone. And I am going to transfer it to account number one oh one one oh one nine one four, which is Township Liability Insurance. And that one is on the first page of the revenue and expenditure report, the yellow highlight. Um, so the amended budget amounts for the first account, the one oh one three seven one eight fifty, the phone, will be one thousand three hundred. And the second amended budget amount for account number one oh one one oh one nine one four for the liability insurance will be fourteen thousand one hundred dollars. And the third set of journal entries is on page one. It is taking money out of account number one oh one one oh one nine hundred, the Printing and Publishing. I'm taking a thousand out of there and I'm putting it into one oh one one oh one seven five two Supplies. So the ending amended budget amount for the Printing and Publishing, the one oh one one oh one nine hundred will be three thousand. And the ending amended budget amount for the one oh one one oh one seven five two Supplies will be eight thousand five hundred. And then there's one for parks and rec, which is on page four of your revenue expenditure. And that one, I am taking five hundred dollars out of account number two oh eight one oh one nine three zero, Maintenance Repair. And I am gonna put it into account number two oh eight one oh one seven five two Supplies. So that would bring our amended budget amounts, uh, fifty-five hundred for account number two thou, or two oh eight one oh one nine three zero for Maintenance and Repair. And the ending amended budget amount for account number two zero eight one oh one seven five two Supplies will be five hundred. That was a lot, sorry.
Okay, any questions? Okay, do we have a motion to, uh? Dan, you have a motion?
Wasn't, but I hope you're not. I have a motion to accept this budget amendment. Does that have support?
Yes, okay, we have support for that.
Yes, of course.
The motion's support to accept the budget amendments is submitted. Roach call vote.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Gazinski, yes. So are you?
Stevens, yes. Motion carries. Township Truckers Tree Event for October eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Barb and I, we ran our, our Easter long with Gina. We ran our Easter egg hunt, so we decided we wanted to continue to do something fun for the, the kids of the township. So we agreed on October eleventh that that was good with the board, that we can do that. What we wanna do is we wanna set up tables in here. So if it's raining or cold or whatever, we can just be waiting here. We don't have to worry about, oh, you know, if it's bad, let's move it. We're just gonna do it in here. And people can decorate their tables and have stuff for the kids to do, activities and whatnot, kind of like we did for the Easter event. I think people get a lot of fun in that.
And, well, have you guys covered it there?
Yes, thank you. If you can, I'll be there, Gina.
Yep, if I can, I'll be here definitely.
Okay.
Do you have a time map? Um, no, he didn't discuss a time. Okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll put a couple of months left. That was just wondering. I put it in my calendar. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, good deal. Need to come outside.
Do we need to do a motion on that or not?
Uh, yeah. Okay, citizen, anyone else? Citizen comments? This is your opportunity to address the board or any ideas?
That was all.
That was a lot.
Nothing? Okay, court comments?
Yes.
I have some.
I have one. Believe it or not, I have one. Um, we are gonna be having a Richmond School election for, I can't remember if it's a boundary hall. I think it's a boundary hall. Um, in November. It's just for the people that are in Richmond schools. So it's, what is it? North of Meisner?
Halfway, halfway north of Meisner Road.
Yeah. So there's like a hundred, I think I have a hundred registered voters in precinct one and eleven hundred in precinct two. So I'm gonna combine the precincts, so we're just gonna do it here, so I don't have two different precincts. But the school does reimburse us for everything. So I will be keeping track of every paper, copy, postage, anything and everything that relates to that election, that we will reimburse for it. Because if they would just have it with a normal election, they wouldn't have to reimburse us because we're running the election. But because it's a special election, they pay for it. November fourth, mark for calendar. Or you can just do absentee voting.
Okay, you have other?
Oh, sorry, sorry. There will be no early voting center for that election. We don't have to do it unless it's a, um, state or federal election and it doesn't make sense to do it for that small amount, you know, voter. So we will not be doing an early voting center.
Okay, I got three. Um, last Thursday, I met with Samantha Davis. She's our V N R coordinator, um, for a woman helping her park. She was coming over to this side of the state and I asked her to stop on by and she was very impressed with the work done so far. She thinks it's well done. And she was saying that eventually one of our phases is to take the road back to the, um, river and have another parking area, a smaller pavilion. She said that'd make an excellent candidate for a land trust fund grant program. You get one month of stuff. I also told her, there's a group working to connect the McComb Orchard Trail in Richmond with a bridge to Bay Trail in St. Clair. If that is connected, if that, that happens, that would complete the coast-to-coast trail in Michigan that goes right by our truck. There's another long-term plan to envision a water trail from Memphis to Marine City along that river that also goes by our park. It would be the two place, it would be the only place where those two trails meet. So, yeah. Um, the next one, um, we're, we're gonna, there's a proposal, land scene to send more money to the township for roads. And the director of road commission was saying that the money, they're gonna develop a non-match program for surface preservation. So have the road where we have to, um, let's say like St. Clair Highway or some of the bypass work by the expressway are paved. Those might as well, and that's expensive. So if they have a fund like that, that would really help us out to free some of those costs. The last thing, um, Mr. Ha, Mr. Hazelton, the road commission informed me that Church Road between Marine City Highway and Meisner will be paved next year.
Oh, wait, what?
Church Road between Marine City Highway and Meisner is gonna be.
That's why they took it, powered everything to that.
What's that?
They're, they wrote it in a road, it was sticks and everything, you know.
They could be doing preliminary surveying. That's a part of a master plan that's decades old.
They're gonna have to fix the ditches because.
They're gonna probably redo the.
Redo?
Yeah, cause they did that on Meisner Road when they paved that a number of years ago.
Well, that's something you pay for.
Yeah. Now, this has probably been in their master plan for well over sixty years. I can remember as a kid growing up, Church Road between St. Clair Highway and Division. My dad saying, well, you better enjoy this gravel road now, but it's gonna be paved. Of course, that was fifty-six.
Are you sure? He, he grabbed it from twenty-six to, and one nine, you know, where it was paved now.
Was it, was it gravel?
Oh, yeah, it was.
Yeah.
When, when was it, when was it made?
Just kinda, I, I wanna say back in the seventies.
Yeah.
Well, you, um, Mr. Manny, you must have been living here when they made Over and Out Township, right?
That's what he was just saying.
I live all the way. Where, where?
It was a sudden.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that. It was, it was bad.
Yeah, so, I mean, eventually it's gonna get paved all the way to Division, probably, maybe.
That's, that's year?
Next year. Next year is just from, to Meisner.
Marine City Highway and Meisner.
Right.
So they're gonna do like three miles, three miles.
I told you guys, so that's about, our turnaround is supposed to get done by October.
What, turn it around?
Yeah.
Well, land, you know. It's brown law or whatever it was supposed to. I see. Yeah.
And.
I thought we were supposed to start that after, um.
Yeah, right, it was supposed to.
They didn't start it here.
It was supposed to get done by October. And.
Yeah, that's, yeah, October.
Yeah.
I just, yeah.
Hey, this year.
The last, the last time I went to work commission, we made and didn't talk about it.
Hmm, maybe they changed their mind.
Could be.
Yeah.
I think.
You know, you already gave them.
I'm gonna be flying by your house now. So would I. No, I, I, I. It's why. Really? Should we get?
Why? I've been true.
I had that.
Oh, yeah.
Good thing.
Brown for. Okay, yeah, all right.
It's just me.
All right, I have, I have nothing else. We're up to a German?
I need that motion to do a German, it's eight twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Ireland, German?
Who supported?
Yeah.
Yeah?
My fashion.
Yep. Everybody's.
I'm trying to walk in.
Question carries.